Good morning, and welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting of May 24, 2022. The following please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberate to be as it is at its source.
We have the agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move the agenda.
Second.
Second by Kevin. I was in favor if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Okay, at this point, is there public comment period? And a portion of our board meeting that allows for opportunity for citizens to address the county board in a public setting? Is there Mr. Brent Erdman here?
Yes.
And the daughter?
No, she found out last night about 9:30 that she had a dentist appointment at 9:00, so she wasn't able to come. She did write a statement, if you guys accept that or not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we can do that. This is a public meeting with a set agenda then, and therefore we ask the public to limit comments to three minutes or less. And I've asked our county administrator to keep time and provide you with a one-minute warning. And remember, the county board will not take action on comments during this period. So, Mr. Erdman, if you please step forward then to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brent Erdman. My address is 201 Pioneer Street, Mankato, Minnesota, 56001.
Go ahead.
Okay. I am here today because Captain Paul Barter, the Blue Earth County Sheriff's Department, told me to come in and make the media, county board, aware of kind of the situation that my family's in. There was a female employee of the Blue Earth County Sheriff's Department who came up to me and reported that she had been sexually assaulted and sexually abused by former and current members of the Blue Earth County Sheriff's Department. And I reported that to Lisa Seifert and Patrick Dermott of the Blue Earth County Attorney's Office, and they asked me to keep it quiet and not report it. And after about a week or so, I reported the information to Bob Meyer, and at that time, I believe, an investigation was brought about. Since that time, my family has been put in a strange situation because we are whistleblowers and lost some family time with my daughter, who Jay Hooper works for the Blue Earth County Jail, is my daughter's stepdaughter, and Brad is his best friend and works at the Sheriff's Department. I sent a letter to Bob Meyer on May 19th requesting a bunch of information. Today yet, we haven't received any of that information from Bob Meyer. The meeting was originally scheduled for Bob's email for June 7th, but it was escalated up to today, so I really haven't had time to prepare much. You've already advised me that today you're just going to hear comments. Hopefully, we can talk about this more. Board members, I came forward and reported what a girl that was crying behind her window at the Blue Earth Sheriff's Department told me. She was shaking so bad, just like I am up here now, because she didn't know who to turn to. She saw me walking down that hall and called me over. Bob Meyer, and I'm assuming you guys probably have that report already, I'm sure Pat has it also. So I'm going to ask you, board members, if an employee of the Blue Earth County Sheriff's Department, a female, came to you and wanted to tell you that she was sexually assaulted and sexually abused, would you have walked away, or would you have done what I did? And listened, and conferred in her, and advised her? And after a week of thinking about it, I reported it to Bob Meyer. Since that time, my daughter has been taken away from me for some custody issues because her husband works, stepfather works for the Sheriff's Department under Brad Peterson. I'm assuming my three minutes are bowed up. Like I said, my wife wanted to come here today, but because this was escalated today instead of in June, she's a teacher, wasn't able to come because of finals week. My daughter went to school yesterday at 6:30 in the morning, didn't get home until about 9:30 last night, and she found out that her mom had scheduled the dental appointment today, so she went there. We do have some paperwork that we did write. Like I said, I don't know what you people do know and what you don't know. But I wrote a little statement here. Everything today isn't impromptu because Bob hasn't furnished any information to us. And my daughter also wrote a letter here today, too. If you guys want to accept that, I'd be allowed to give it out and hand it out. I'll finish. You guys have my name and phone number. Thank you for listening. And I, too, just like that victim that day, I am scared because I know what my family's been through, because we whistleblowed what Lisa Seifert, and we have it on tape, when she asked us not to report that to Bob or to anybody else, to keep it quiet was Lisa's term. And I stressed myself out for a week about it, wasn't it, Bob, roughly? You have the dates there. And I finally came forward it and reported it. And I tell you what the Blue Earth County Attorney's Office, Blue Earth County Sheriff's Department has put my family through since then.
Mr. Chair, it's one minute left.
If you guys want that, or do you want Jeff to get it handed out, or do you want me to come up there and hand these out, or what are you comfortable with, sir?
Comfortable with that.
There's one for you, board. There's one for Pat. Thank you.
Again, Mr. Erdman, for your comments.
Thank you.
Moving on into our rest of the agenda here.
Mr. Chair, do we need an action to receive and file, or formally move it to staff? Or what typically happens after public?
Certainly can give me direction, but typically, we don't take any action.
It doesn't need a motion, though, to ask staff to look at it?
We'll have staff follow up and give us an update.
Just, you know, maybe a little additional information. The issue that he's referring to was back in 2015, and we did conduct a formal investigation at that time. And Mr. Erdman has made a public data request. We are working on that, so just fill in a little of the blanks there.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
And Mr. Chair and Commissioners, as Bob said, this has been since 2015. Mr. Erdman has been in court before the judge numerous times on his visitation issues, and Judge Anderson has issued numerous orders regarding a visitation involving his daughter.
All right. Thank you. Okay, then we have ahead, before us then is the public planning and zoning. Gentlemen, want to come forward and state your names?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning. Morning.
Morning.
Whoever's going to start?
Yeah, Scott Salisbury here. Mr. Chairman, PC 14-22 is an item from the Broody Family Trust and USS Maverick Solar LLC. The request is for review and approval of an interim use permit for a 620 kilowatt large solar energy system. The site is located in the southeast quarter of Section 3 Rapidan Township and Agricultural District. The site has a location address of 555-92 Hickory Lane and is proposed directly south of an existing large solar energy system on the property. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report. The property owner and a representative of the solar company was present. Representative provided a brief presentation to the planning commission and stated that the site will produce enough power to supply the needs of 150 homes and that residents may subscribe to the power output. He further stated that the height of the panels will range from five to eight feet in height, and the site will have pollinator-friendly habitat planted. There was no other public comment, and members of the planning commission expressed no questions or concerns about the proposal, and they complimented the use of the existing infrastructure from the site to the north. And following discussion, the planning commission forwarded a recommendation for approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions prepared by staff in this staff report, and the board action is a resolution.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, we will open then for public comment on PC number 14-22. This hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. For those participating via Zoom, you can unmute your line by clicking the microphone button at the bottom of your computer screen or pressing star six on your phone. So is there any public comment? Anybody here? Okay, just come forward, state your name and address.
Luke Gildemeister, US Solar, 100 North Sixth Street, Minneapolis, 55403. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Again, I work as a project developer at US Solar in Minnesota, small company, about 45 full-time employees, just here to represent US Solar and the Broody Family Trust, our application for an interim use permit pursuant to Section 24-334 Solar Energy System Standards of the Blue Earth County Code of Ordinances to construct, own, and operate a 620-kilowatt community solar garden named USS Maverick Solar LLC on approximately 3.54 acres of the parcel owned by the Broody Family Trust. It will be located south of Hickory Lane, north of our project, but south of Hickory Lane on the same exact parcel is USS Broody Solar, which is an existing 620-kilowatt community solar garden that we actually operate. West and south of our proposed project is agricultural land. There is more agricultural land to the east of our project area. To the northeast of our project area is a residence owned by Randy Norum at 55676 Hickory Lane. We have worked diligently with Mr. Salisbury to ensure that our proposed project meets the 750-foot residential setback rule. The reasoning, again, for our project's smaller size is that we are constrained on all sides, the existing garden to the north, the western parcel boundary to the west, a gas pipeline to the south, and then the 750-foot setback rule to the east. Benefits for the community, as Scott mentioned, we can generate enough electricity to power approximately 140 homes annually and interconnect directly to the existing distribution system of Xcel Energy. Residents, businesses, and public entities in and around Blue Earth County who are Xcel Energy customers, they have the ability to subscribe to a portion of the electricity generated, and they can receive bill credits on their Xcel Energy bills. So in this way, the members of the local community will have the opportunity to receive a direct economic benefit from this project. So we're contracted to deliver electricity for a period of at least 25 years. In terms of construction, it's expected to last about three to four months. Delivery routes will be designed to pose the smallest traffic impact in the local community. We'll obviously coordinate with local authorities regarding preferred times and routes prior to construction mobilization. It's pretty simple, we just, you know, I-beams are driven into the ground about 12 to 15 feet. The racking sits on top of the I-beams, then the solar panels clip into the racks. So again, no concrete footing, no permanent structures or buildings. The pile driving lasts about a day or a day and a half. After that, you can expect to see a pickup truck on site about four times per year. So in conclusion, I would like to very much thank the staff members of Blue Earth County. Our project will benefit the landowner and the broader Blue Earth community by producing at least 25 years of local energy that will be delivered to nearby residents and businesses. The Blue Earth County Planning Commission did vote to unanimously recommend approval of our project, so we respectfully request that the Blue Earth County Board votes to approve our IUP application. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, anybody wishes on the board?
Got a close call.
I got to do one more, I guess. Is there anybody at this time that wishes to comment on PC 14-22? Please come forward. And if there's anybody that wishes to comment on PC 14-22, please come before the board. Anybody wishing to comment on the board, for the action on PC number 14-22, please come before the board? Hearing none, then we'll conclude that portion and bring it back to the board for discussion.
I'll move approval.
Second. Any discussion? I just have one question. What kind of pollinators are they talking about? I don't know if that requires you to come up.
For the vegetation?
Yeah, for the vegetation.
Do we get into that detail, Scott?
It's got to be better than dandelions, let's put it that way.
Yes, Mr. Chair, it's a great question. So all of our Minnesota projects, we have about over 70 now that do the pollinator-friendly habitat under the panels. I do have a couple photos here if you'd like me to hand those over, but to answer your question, you would typically see, you know, monarch butterflies, bumblebees, it would probably be the most common, I would say. But we work with our landscaping and screening contractors, NRS. They're based in the Twin Cities, and so we would work with them to plant that pollinator-friendly habitat.
So different flowers and so forth, like I said, not wildflowers? Different types, not dandelions? Okay.
Yeah, and the Board of Water and Natural Resources has some approved seed mixes that they would be using, targeting.
No dandelions, Mark.
Well, that's what, you know, I won't get into that with not mowing your yard. All right, thank you for that, yeah. Okay, is there any further part of the board? We have a motion in front of us. Anything else? Okay, I guess we take a vote? All right. Yeah, all those in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm George Leary with Blue Earth County Planning and Zoning. PC 15-22 is a request from Blue Earth County for review and approval of an amendment to the Blue Earth County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 24 zoning and Chapter 14 shoreland, to change certain cutting and filling projects from an interim use permit to a permitted use when designed by the Natural Resources Conservation Service or the Soil and Water Conservation District. Staff presented the report. There was no public comment. Members of the planning commission indicated they had no questions. They stated the proposed amendment makes sense and will provide increased efficiency. Following the discussion, the planning commission forwarded a recommendation of approval of the amendment to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff, and the board action is the adoption of the ordinance amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I'll call for public comment on PC number 15-22. This hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. And for those participating via Zoom, you can unmute your line by clicking the microphone button on the bottom of your computer screen or pressing number six, star six on your phone. So do we have at this point, anybody wishing to comment? Anybody wishing to comment on 15, PC 15-22? And if there's anybody wishing to comment on PC 15-22? Hearing none, we can bring it back to the board for discussion, action.
I'll move approval.
Kevin?
Second.
Kevin? Any discussion? Is it ordered? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
All right, I guess at this point, we have our three, good folks here from our human services?
Good morning.
Good morning. Phil and Angie?
No action items today, oh my goodness.
You can take as much time as you want, we've got a lot of time.
I think it's happened once.
It even goes faster with three questions instead of five or four.
But we're both known as talkers, so that's going to, you're going to have to still shut us up at some point. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, thank you for hearing us today. As Commissioner indicated, we don't have any action items. We have two major program areas that we want to cover today for discussion information items. And then I do have one other issue that I want to bring before the board, just to make sure that we're all aligned and that I understand the board would support the direction we're going on an item that's related to children's mental health. So I'm going to hand it off to Angie first to talk about adult behavioral health.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So, May is Mental Health Month, and we often bring statistics regarding mental health and behavioral health in front of you during the month of May. We've also, as a region, spent some time working on some community awareness, and so hopefully, either through the radio, media, print ads, you've seen some of the work that the Ten County project has done regarding raising awareness to mental health resources, especially during this month. So in front of you are a couple of documents about behavioral health, and so we talk about behavioral health as the combination of adult mental health and chemical health services. And so the report in front of you, the colorful report in front of you with bar graphs, is the Behavioral Health Unit Report, and it really gives numbers through the end of 2021. And so the Behavioral Health Unit provides adult mental health case management services to adults that are, have a serious and persistent mental illness, that's a very specific, high-acuity, complex type of mental health need. And so they work with individuals either on a voluntary basis, or either voluntary or involuntary through a civil commitment. And so past studies have showed that case management services of this kind dramatically decrease the need for hospitalization once services occur. And so oftentimes, folks get referred to us for case management once they're hospitalized. So many individuals may not receive services, and when their mental health gets to a point that they need hospitalization, that's when they reach out and seek services. So that's often when we get involved with people, and when we work with them, their need for hospitalization greatly decreases. So as you can see with the data in front of you, we've seen a 39% increase in case management services, and so individuals that receive case management work with a case manager on at least a monthly basis, if not more. In many cases, we're having weekly and daily contact with individuals. The complexity of cases has increased over time as well, and I'll talk about that here in just, in just a minute. The second page shares a little bit of information about civil commitment, and so that is involuntary treatment for mental health, chemical health, developmental disability, or sexual dangerousness. And so you can see that we've had a 33% increase in screening requests. That's when either a medical professional or an interested person who's involved in the care with that individual reaches out and asks us to screen them for civil commitment. There's a whole process that ensues after that, but you can see the increase in demand for these types of assessments and screenings. And so this is over the past five years, a 33% increase, and then we broke down those screening requests by type. So about half of them are individuals who experience a mental illness. That is the blue. The orange is mentally ill and chemically dependent, so there's both acute needs on both mental health and chemical health side. There's 11 individuals in 2021 that were brought to our attention for involuntary treatment due to chemical health needs. This has increased over time. We used to not see as many of these years ago, but this has, you know, been increasing. And then one individual for mentally ill and dangerous, and we've actually seen more and more of this over times, too. So just the one in 2021 for mentally ill and dangerous, so they have a mental illness, but they're also having involvement, oftentimes with the legal system, that there are dangerous behaviors as a result of their untreated mental health. So the last page is the Second Step Clubhouse, and many, actually, I believe all of you have been over to the clubhouse, which is a community support program located in the Vine Building, where we work with individuals who are voluntarily wanting to work through social rehabilitation services. And so it's therapeutic, supports group activities, individual activities, and a stigma-free environment, so individuals can receive support, develop life skills, and learn how to manage their mental health. And so you can see the attendance numbers, so 123 individual members received services at the clubhouse this last year. Our numbers are down from the last few years. This is primarily due to COVID. And so what the clubhouse did during many of high-acuity COVID times is they focused on outreach services versus individuals coming to the clubhouse. Staff worked on virtual communications with individuals instead of coming into the clubhouse. And so we're hoping to see those numbers come back up. We have no doubt that they will. There's an increase in need across the whole system. The next page that I have for you is titled Mental Health Systemic Shifts. And so one of the things, when I was working with our behavioral health supervisor, Julie Moniz, on this board report, we talked about how numbers are informative, but under what context are they most informative? And so what I wanted to do is paint a bit of a picture about what has happened in the mental health system over decades, actually. Prior to this role years ago, and a couple roles before my current one, I was a mental health case manager, so I have familiarity with what it was like to do the job at that time. And I can tell you what our case managers in our county and all the surrounding counties do for case management is quite different than what it used to be. And that is a result of higher acuity need individuals and changing system opportunities. So what's available in the system for individuals is drastically different than what it used to be. And so I'm going to go through a couple of topics about what it was like then and what it's like now. So when you see our increasing numbers, and I just want to, like I said, paint a picture about what individuals experience and what our case managers work with individuals through. NAMI has, Sue Abderholden, the executive director of NAMI Minnesota, frequently uses this quote, "Minnesota's mental health system is not broken, it has never been built." So people often say, "Well, this is a broken system." It's not necessarily that it's broken, it's never been fully thoroughly built. We've built in pieces, but not across the whole system. And so as, as you know, we've been working in human services on collaborative safety and the importance of the second story. So this is the second story. This is informing all of you what, what it's like in providing case management services. The maps in front of you, then, we used to use a few of our local hospitals, primarily for individuals in need. And so you see the shaded kind of circle or ovals. We often use just these local hospitals around us, and the state was a safety net at the time, and we used our local community behavioral health hospital. There was rarely a waitlist for those services. We could get individuals into those hospital levels of care rather quickly. Now, we're sending people all over the state, and in fact, in a three-state area. And so I only highlighted those kind of locations where we use hospitalizations frequently, and especially out in Rapid City, you'll see that one way out there, and that's often for kids. So we're often sending our children all the way out there for hospital level of services because there really is not much for services in, in the area or in Minnesota for hospital level. Now, the state system is indicating they are not a safety net of services, and the waitlists for state facilities are up to 12 or more months to be able to get a bed in a state system. In some cases, we've been able to make that happen a little sooner, but I know of individuals that we currently have on the waiting list that are months and months, more than a year out, actually, for getting a bed. And so emergency department wait times have also changed. I remember as a case manager going into an emergency department and working with law enforcement, they were frustrated when we had to wait three hours to find a bed for someone, and so law enforcement had to stay there with us for safety reasons. Now, emergency departments are talking about how they board individuals in emergency departments. And so, for example, our local hospital here gave us some data, and you have that in front of you, but in 2018, they boarded 107 patients for more than 24 hours in the emergency department because there was no other hospital bed in the state appropriate for that individual. It's not because of the choice of the emergency department, it's because our system doesn't have capacity. And then in 2021, that number more than doubled. In 2018- In 2018, the maximum number of days that a single person was boarded in the emergency department was 25 days. So an individual staying in an emergency department for 25 days. In 2021, at the time they had sent me the data, it was more than 147 days. And so we have individuals with severe, complex needs, oftentimes aggression, in our emergency departments for days and days and months at times. Case managers' efforts in finding housing and community placement options. It used to take one to five phone calls, reach outs. We would know where individuals could go for placement locations. Now it's very common to spend 30, 40, 50 phone calls trying to find an appropriate place for a person. And I should rephrase that, to find a place for a person and bring in supports that we can to try and make that placement as safe as possible for the person. It is not ideal. Psychiatry, then, was very difficult to find. What we've done with our mental health center, psychiatry is much more available now as a result of innovations that have occurred within this region and that have been supported by this board. So that's extremely important to point out. Key takeaways for this is we're experiencing more and more pressure to build levels of care locally and regionally. For example, the Crisis Center, Mobile Crisis, and there are more levels of care that we do need. We ask for your support for current workforce. That's critical. Traditional duties are just more complex due to needs and systemic pressures. And then I wanted to share with you some exciting news. On Sunday night, the legislature did pass a comprehensive mental health bill. And so, we would ask for your continued attention and legislative attention. And any avenues that you're able to speak about, the importance of investment in mental health services, would be very much appreciated. That mental health bill truly saved our adult mental health initiative. We were looking at a $1.5 million cut. The funding that went into that sustains this mental health initiative. And so, this was really on the part of Senators Rosen, Friend, Straeheim, and Representative Frederick. So it was bipartisan-supported. So that's a picture of what was then, and this is now.
Thank you, Angie. Is there any questions?
Mr. Chair, I got a couple of questions or comments. So, really, the funding they passed wasn't anything new, or did you end up with a positive?
So...
Because they were going to cut you, but then
Yep.
they heroically gave you some money
Right.
after they said they were going to cut you.
So, a very good question. So, the Department of Human Services had made an announcement. They were going to change the allocations of adult mental health funding in 2025. So, no reduction in funding was going to occur statewide. However, how they divided that out would have likely resulted in a $1.5 million cut to our region, which is what we were told. And so, what this bill did is it infused an additional $10 million into that fund of money in 2025 to hold harmless anyone that was going to lose money. But then in 2026, an additional $10 million, and ongoing. So really, in 2026, it's an additional $20 million compared to what we have now statewide. So it's $33 million statewide investment. So it was a significant increase. And really, other regions across the state have been truly underfunded. And so it holds us harmless, at least. We may get more. We don't know how that money will be divided out. But we were assured that funding would remain stable for us.
So the new calculation they used, then, was more fair, in your opinion, or don't you know enough about the formula?
We don't know enough about it at this time. So it was our desire to have all of that mapped out. But that was not possible to do based on a number of factors. So that new formula has not yet been determined.
I don't think anybody would argue that there's underfunded, but certainly doesn't mean we're overfunded, would be...
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So, there is an infusion of some new money, though, from what I understand. So that's a good thing.
Yes.
Yes.
I just have one other question, then, a quick comment. So, back to the mentally ill and dangerous person. And I probably know this, or I should know this, but I want to refresh my memory. That's mentally ill and dangerous to other people. Does that include themselves necessarily, or not?
So, really, good question again. Mentally ill and dangerous is deemed mentally ill and dangerous to themselves and the public.
Okay.
So, individuals who are mentally ill are deemed, really, they are a danger to themselves, either due to personal harm, or, so if it's a mental illness, civil commitment, they have to be a danger to themselves. It's danger to themselves or others, is how the phrasing is. And it's inability to appropriately receive their medical care, danger to themselves based on harm, or to, you know, receiving basic services. So they're dangerous to themselves. Mentally ill and dangerous is actually to the public.
Okay. All right. That's because I kind of figured there was more than one
Yes.
for mentally ill and dangerous to self.
Yes.
Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, the criteria to get into a hospital bed is usually harm to self or others, that risk you're talking about. So you have probably heard that a bunch, because that's usually what it is, is either/or. In the commitments, in that pie chart that Angie gave you, the mentally ill part is usually that they cannot care for themselves, and they are harm to self. So that's that part of a commitment.
Okay.
The M-I-N-D, that smaller, higher one, is that they actually could act out on the public. And so it kind of stair steps in commitments. But the other criteria is used in hospitalization. So it's a very familiar kind of criteria set, is we talk a lot about risk of harm to self or others. That's how we say it.
All right.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you for that clarification. And then just one comment I want to make. We had John here from Community Corrections at our work session last week. And I see a lot of similarities to issue he has and the issue you people are having. So, I think in the grand scheme of things, this is not alarming, but it is a huge issue. John had the same examples you guys have. All the same data, basically, just a little different numbers attached to them. But very frustrating for both organizations.
Yeah.
So... That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
You have a question, Kevin? I just had a quick one, a couple... First of all, is the money even, is that related to the bond or the budget and everything?
It's kicked down the road, right? So this is all money into the future. But what we did do is stave off this decision that would put that cut on the table. And then this new money, with Commissioner Angie, you were talking about, is kicked down the road for, you know, a couple of years before it would show up, so...
I was just trying to figure with the status of the current session, or...
Mr. Chair, this is one of the few bills that was passed by the legislature.
Trying to, yeah.
Right.
Because it was obviously a train wreck at the end. I just wanted to make sure we weren't part of it. I didn't think it was, but, okay. That's good. I don't know, a quick question, Angie. Didn't like any of these stats, like children's mental health and stuff? It doesn't seem like it's... I was wondering how much the COVID, the lockdowns and all that had an effect on kids at all?
Yeah, specific to kids, Phil's going to share some data about impacts with children's mental health services. Measuring COVID impacts on a very granular level is difficult. Systemic, we're seeing an increase. You know, when COVID first came, we kind of had this lull. And then now, we're really seeing the increase, both in mental health and chemical health. So it's significant. We're not alone. Most counties are seeing an increase. And so, yeah, it's very hard at that granular level to say, "Oh, this is exactly due to COVID." But we are seeing a very strong systemic change in some of those areas.
Thank you. Thank you, Lynn. At this point, you want to fill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I might just say that Commissioner Brunder, what he said about corrections is what we wanted to try to convey through some of this data, and so you guys obviously have it. You've heard it. I feel bad at times, the disconnect, because things have changed and shifted. And how you kind of articulate that, sometimes it gets lost in the data. And so, this issue about the high-end need, and what I would describe, you use the word frustration, and dissatisfaction, that we're sitting in, first of all, EDs for an awful long time with the adults, and sometimes with kids out in Rapid City. And then we don't have a place to put them, and I've expressed this to you all before. But I, it's just so dissatisfying, because then when a bed finally opens up, you're so desperate, you just plunk them anywhere you can. That is not the kind of care, you know, like we break our leg. You go, "Well, actually, it was bad experience, but got in. They set my leg, casted it, got better, took it off, all is good." We're not proud of that kind of sit and wait, and families disrupted for months on end, and these vulnerable kids, where it's a big chunk of their life when you look at it percentage-wise. So, you guys obviously have that message. And that was our intention, is try to get a little deeper to the root and say, "Something's shifted, and it's not good. It's not a good thing." So you guys clearly have heard that message loud and clear. Children's mental health, it is really the same, Mr. Chair, same story, really. And this lag that Angie just described is, you'll see in the 2021 data here, and I'm not going to go through all this, but that there was a lag, that there was an actual decrease. And now in 2021 and forward in 2022, there's been this increase in need. So, the first box in the slide just talks about what children's mental health targeted case management is. It is a mandated service. It's for children who are considered to have a severe emotional disturbance. And in the very last part of that paragraph, it includes the mental health components, social, educational, the primary health vocational and rec services. So we try to look at the holistic health of a child and say, "How can we try to address the needs of this individual person?" The next box talks about the child changing, which is a fairly dynamic thing when you're dealing with children. So we develop a plan in collaboration with the family and other service providers. The bolded area there talks about, and now, so this is up to date, that there were 156 cases assigned or open for children's case management as of 4/27 of this year. And that's with our 7.5 FTEs doing that work. And I have a slide on that, too, that we've improved our position with regard to staffing in this area. So we appreciate that very much. To your question, Mr. Chair, the COVID-19 piece talks about, at the end of the paragraph, an increased demand in services, increased wait times. Hard to get diagnostic assessments. So when we say, "What specifically are we talking about?", it's to get them a diagnostic assessment so that you can start therapy, and then getting them into therapy. There are delays now in that. And at any given time, this is kind of a new way we've triaged. But we have 10 to 20 referrals that are in pending mode, and that's when we can try to set up those appointments. And we have a staff that actually works on that triage at the front end. Out of the graphic, you'll see the year-over-year numbers. The average caseload, you'll see that go down in 2021, and that is due to increased staffing and support from the board. There is that note there that we added an FTE in 19, and then really two in 21. But part of that duty is doing that intake, so that's why it says 1.75. So really, three new staff, which has stemmed this trend of going straight up to a more reasonable number. The statutory piece, which is represented in the graph, is 15. But 21 is a lot more manageable than 30. So thank you for that help. And then you'll see the numbers tank off, as Angie indicated, in 2020 and 2021, which gets to your question, Commissioner, about COVID impact. But now, they're popping up in a drastic fashion the other way. The next graphics show the representation of the new staff and the caseload decrease over time, just in graphic form. So we kind of talked about that. Mr. Chair, I might pause there. I have one more issue that is related to children's mental health and placements. But just if there's any questions about that data.
Any questions, Phil, at this point?
Nope.
All right.
And a shift then into really a walk-in issue that I was talking with Bob about. It's just popped up in the last week or so to a crossroad. And the story I would tell is that prior, there were really two ways that we would place kids, and both involve courts, either through a CHIPS, which is really a need that comes forward and goes through the court for a placement. And the parents are on board, the kids are usually on board. There's a need for help. So that would still go through court. Then there's court-ordered, the John Marsalik option, where they've either committed a crime or they're at a point where they are at risk to self or others, at the point where they need to be placed, and the court steps in and says, "You will be placed." So those are two pathways. What DHS has in this last year, from last session, came up with an idea of what they're calling the Third Pathway. And it's causing us all kinds of concerns. The Third Pathway is those kids that aren't then court-ordered and aren't involved in our services directly. So they would come just from a parent or whatever, and DHS wanted to help fund those, you know, as a service, is what they're saying, not really as a placement. So they did an allocation. Well, the problem is the money. Show me the money. And our allocation is $9,000 for this year, and, well, less than that. $8,500 for this year, $8,600 for next year. The cost of this care, which we've talked about, would cover one kid for maybe a month. That's what the whole year's allocation is. And it makes little to no sense, is what I would express to the board and what Bob and I have talked about, to jump into this without a lot of definition of what we're on the hook for. And we could help out literally one kid for only the front end of their placement. It wouldn't carry them through their one placement, and then we'd be out of money. And now we have a family and a kid in placement. Now what do we do? And I would say that part is not clear. I don't feel, from my chair, that we're in a place where I understand what our mission would be and how we would pay for that going forward, if we would be on the hook or not. DHS is saying no, but they also said, "Talk to our county attorney." So I'm also talking to Pat right now, saying, "Pat, this is a bad deal." So, right now, what we can do is either decline for this year, or decline for this year and next year. I would like, to my intent, I know we can't take action on this, but to just get a read from the board, is to decline for this year and give it some time, and see if it becomes more clear how this is actually going to work, the mechanics of it, because it is a bit of a mess. We did talk regionally, and just to let you know, from that perspective, I think most, if not all, a majority of the regional counties are going to do a similar thing. So they're talking to their boards in a similar way, saying, "Hey, we've got this crossroad. We know that some of the metro counties have already indicated that they're declining, and so we'll see where it all plays out." But I just didn't want you to be surprised if you do hear about it, like, "What is this thing?" In some ways, you could argue it's a really small piece that isn't set up well because of the funding. And there's another piece that feels really big, that it could be a gateway into parents basically saying, "Place my kid, and we're on the hook somehow, even though we're not directly involved." And that causes me some real concern, because obviously, parents can place their kids privately. That's not a concern. But that they might ask us to be part of that without being involved is very murky. So, that would be my intent, is to decline unless any of you have really strong feelings the other way.
Mr. Chair. So, I might just miss this, when you were describing it to us. The third option comes with $8,500 this year and $8,600 next year. And it's, is there another program? Or are we still got the issues with the beds way out in South Dakota? I mean, it doesn't create more beds for us, right? It just gives you $8,600 more to deal with the problem we already have?
Right. And what concerns me, Commissioner, so yes, my answer to your question is, yes, it does not improve bed capacity at all. There's no addressing of bed capacity or facilities that could take kids. So that issue, you know, is the same as it would be without this. But it's, yeah, the string's attached, or how does it play out? And does it send a message to families, "Oh, you can go to the county and get help", when really, the $8,500 is not, is going to be a flash in the pan? It just is. That's what it's going to be. And so they're going to be sent the message, "Come." And then it'll be, you know, like, "We don't have anything to offer you. It's gone." Yeah, we already had, and it says, "First come, first served." So it's pretty clear that they know we're going to burn through it. So it's just not a great, I was going to say business deal, but it's just not a, it's not a good flow, workflow of how that goes. And there are no more beds with...
Well, it doesn't seem like it really creates more issues for us at this point, I think, without having more... At the end of the day, somebody's got to come up with a way to keep more people out of the system.
Right.
I know you people have probably talked about that, many, many different ways. Prevention is always a word that is very expensive.
Right.
And you really don't know the outcomes.
Yes.
Because you don't know if what you did really helped this kid not get in trouble.
Right.
We've had prevention discussions for years.
Absolutely.
Goes back to Region 9 with their drug prevention program they had for teens. You know, we spent all kinds of money on that, and everybody, you know, nobody says, "Well, how do you know it works?" It's, "Well, you don't." You're just, you should shoot. You think it's a good investment? And I think, you know, a lot of those programs have gone away. I remember being part of that, because those were some of the first programs that got cut.
Yeah, that's what happens.
They were the low-hanging... They were the low-hanging fruit, as Dennis would refer to it, too. But, you know, so I, you know, I'm sure you're talking about that plenty, but it probably has to go to more to the policy decision makers. And, you know, what kind of things can we do? If we can't get beds, we got to keep people out of the beds.
Right.
There ain't a whole lot of options here.
Absolutely. Well, there's a couple of initiatives. You've given me an opportunity to leave it on a positive note, because I feel, again, there's a lot of hard things we're facing right now. And I do think it's a complex issue that's made worse by some of the COVID realities. So we're just in a scramble mode. But there's some things we're doing that are proactive, and you highlight those. In housing, we have a regional project now with La Sura and Race, where we're trying to just be creative and, you know, and that. We've talked to you about that. And the children's side, in this area, what we've, what I've said, what my opinion is, is that I don't think DHS is just going to stand up a facility and help us with the bed problem. I think we're going to have to get upstream, fix it ourselves at the local level. I just really believe that. And so our region, again, who we work really well together in human services, but we're looking at an initiative where we look at the possibility of like a children's crisis center, like what we have on the outside. So there's a place to have them go. Because one of the hardest things that I was describing to you is you just have no pivot. There's no place to turn. And so regionally, if we could consider something like that, that's a big item. And we might want to be creative rather than a facility like our current crisis center, maybe more like a four-bed, smaller footprint type of approach that we could do, more than one of those in the region. So that's one of the initiatives. And then there's other more creative things, like foster care and being smart about even family foster care, sometimes fostering the whole family. Because a lot of times, the parents, my experience has been that they have as many problems, if not more, than the kids. The kids kind of act out the dysfunction, and so then we target them. But really, the root of the problem, especially if they're younger, is this isn't going to go away for a long time, and we need to get there. So I just want to really kind of dovetail on what you said, is that I think we have to be creative. We have to be in that initiative kind of mindset and try to change things. And of course, working for local government, my passion is, I think we're in a best position to do that. We should be about trying to figure that out. Even though we could use more beds, I don't want kids being sent away anywhere and, you know, growing up in a facility. It's not a picture that I would, it's, you have to do it. You don't want to do it. So we do want to do these other things, especially foster care, really good options.
So I'll, one more question, Mr. Chair. So I'll ask you the same question I asked John, which yours is going to be more complicated than John's response was, and I was very complicated by John's response. So when you have these beds, you know, and you say a four-bed facility.
Right.
Does that have to, how do you, how do you, how do you get the workforce for that? Is it high school education, college degrees? What degrees or what, what's the entry level of an operation you could start? Because we are having a problem with staffing. If you can get a lower entry level, and again, like I said, John got very complicated, he brought it back around for me, and he said, you know, a facility with just basically a holding facility could be run relatively cheap. So you could take a shot at it.
And Angie's actually expert at that. So I will see what she has to say about kind of the licensing component, if you will, but we'll try to stay out of, deepen the weeds. The simple version is that you look at that option, and I do think, like a board and lodge facility, so what was Bryley's, a lot of you know Bryley's, that level, where you provide the housing. And then what you do is wrap around the services. So you have a therapist come and see them there. That's the kind of model that's attractive to me, as opposed to trying to hire a therapist. The workforce issue, Commissioner, that you're bringing up, is what we started with in this work group, is we're going to have workforce problems. How do we, how do we staff whatever we build? And that's why the facility, I think, would be very hard, like the Crisis Center in Horizon is struggling, in some of those same ways that everyone is. So that's, that's one thing. The other thing that I'm just going to add and then tip it to Angie to see if she would define this in kind of, those kind of structural terms, is that if it's a locked facility or not, it's a really big deal. And so if you need it to be locked, you're talking a very, very different structure and a lot more red tape and a lot more staffing, because you have to. So much, what you guys know about our jail, that would be an extreme example. But there's all kinds of rules and regulations that come in when you lock the doors. So a board and lodge is how I would describe the entry level, and you could not have trained staff. They could just come and be night staff, be there as a warm body and have plans if something goes wrong. But really, the people are being boarded there. That's why they call it board and lodge. But and then you wrap services around them. That's the lowest entry point. And then there's a graduated scale up all the way to those locked facilities. Would you describe that differently?
No, I mean, I think that's a very accurate description of it. I think anytime you're looking at development, your, your first question is, who are you trying to serve? What population are you trying to serve? Are you trying to prevent? Are you trying to treat on the high end? Are you doing something in the middle? Is it short term? Is it longer term? Are we talking hours? Are we talking days? Are we talking months? I mean, so they're all a little bit different. The licensing for all of them is a little bit different. But, you know, where we've had the most success is to think about it in two separate ways, which Phil talked about, is you've got the facility, the way the facility is structured, and you want to do kind of the minimum regulation on that as far as, you know, you need a place for a person to be, and you need them to have access to food and their basic needs. And then you bring in the services. And the services can be 24 hours a day. And depending on your goal, you bring in the higher or lower level skilled staff, depending on that. There are a lot of models that have, the majority of the numbers of staff are not professional level staff, but they're trained. So on-the-job training, you can provide that. But they're supervised by professional level staff. So there's 24/7 access to a professional. You can always call someone in, or they're on-site. There may or may not be nursing on-site. Again, it's what's, what's your goal? Who are, what type of population are you targeting? And so there's, there's lots of good models. And honestly, there are models that have not yet been developed. You can be really creative on how these things are put together in some ways.
Sure. Well, thank you for that explanation. And I was right, it's complicated.
It is.
But I will also add one thing to that, is that out of all those challenges you guys deal with, you have to deal with where you're going to place it. You're, I was part of the crisis center up by the, Bob, Stone told, I'm dating myself, whatever's up there now.
Right.
But you start placing that stuff, and you get pushback from the communities.
Yep.
Because that's challenging enough. So, you know, and you didn't even mention that.
Right.
But that's probably, that's a huge hurdle.
Right.
And that can, that can break a deal.
Absolutely.
So, but we left on a relatively good note. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, it's tough in this area particularly. I do appreciate the comments, too, and your insights.
Thank you.
It's not.
Thank you all. Good to see you.
Thank you both.
Have a good day. Enjoy the weather.
You too. Okay, at this time, then, I guess, administration, Bob Meyer.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for May 3.
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Questions? If you're all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Next would be the bills for the three weeks indicated.
Three weeks.
I'm moved to pay the bills.
Second. Moves and Kevin, seconds. Pretty simple. That's about how it works, on three. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number five on your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just have informational items for the board today. We have filled a number of positions, so I'll run through some of those. First being a facility maintenance technician in our facilities department. We've also filled a maintenance technician one in our public works department, a 911 dispatcher in our sheriff's department, a care coordinator doing public health admin choices in our human services department, along with an eligibility specialist and a clerical specialist in our human services department. We also have a number of positions that were filled in our property and environmental resources department, including a property and environmental resources specialist one, actually, two of those. Then we filled a probation, or had a promotion of a probation officer one to a probation officer two. We also had a promotion of a parks technician two to a parks technician three, along with a parks technician one to a parks technician two. Then we had some increase in hours, filling full-time vacancies with part-time staff. So a property environmental resources specialist, part-time position was moved to full-time. And so we've initiated recruitment to fill that part-time position. We also had an increase in hours of our library clerk that's on-call to a part-time library clerk. And so we've initiated recruitment to fill that on-call library position. But completion of employment, I have an appraiser and jail administrator, and so we've initiated recruitment to fill those two positions. And we added a resignation of an appraiser and a legal assistant. So we've initiated recruitment for both of those positions. And then lastly, we had a resignation of a jury attendant. So continued lots of activity in our human resources department, but fortunately, we're filling a number of positions. So be happy to fill or answer any questions that the board might have.
Anybody have any questions about human services?
I don't at this time.
All right.
All right. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number six is a request for a temporary liquor license. This is a request by the Blue Earth County Fair Association to serve alcohol at the fair at the end of July, and so recommending approval of such a license.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Kevin, second.
Second.
Liquor license for this Blue Earth County Fair. Discussion. Favor, I mean, we'll move the motion then. If all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Okay. I have number seven in your packet is an application to conduct excluded bingo. So it's a gambling permit, again, for the Blue Earth County Fair, operated by the Sons of the American Legion. So this has been reviewed and brought forward for the board's consideration today.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Second. Moved by Kevin, second by Kip, for the Sons of the American Legion, gambling. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, item number eight is the financial status report for April 30th. We're a third of the way through our fiscal year with this financial status report. You'll see our total revenues are 14.3 million, with expenses at 29.8 million. This is kind of the low point in our year before we collect those first half taxes. So we have about a $15 million deficit that we're covering right now with reserves, which is typical for this time of year. Continue to draw your attention maybe to the state and federal revenue. The first line under the revenues, we're at 8 million. That represents 22 and a half percent of our budget. So we're hoping to see some of those revenues pick up the pace a little bit to better match our budget. Obviously, the first half property taxes will make that third line start to show some revenue, which will help our bottom line. Our interest on investments obviously are suffering as a result of the current condition of the markets and stuff. So hopefully, that'll start to turn around as well. On the expense side, you know, our total expenses are at 28.2% of our budget, and we're a third of the way through the year, so a little bit behind. Some of that is in that contracts and fees line with our summer road projects. We'll bring that line up into the future as we get those projects rolling now. Towards the bottom of the page, then, is the enterprise fund, Ponderosa. You'll see there we have total revenues of 1.6 million against expenses of 573,000. So strong revenue against expenses there. Again, those expenses tend to fluctuate with cell development or large equipment purchases. So at this point in the year, we have not had some of those expensive costs. The second page has our cash and investment balances. Towards the top, you'll see our total available funds at 62.2 million. We compare that to a six-month operating needs of 51.7. So we continue to be in the strong position there. A little further down the page, then, you'll see a line titled Total County Funds. We sit at 121.2 million in fund balance at this point in time. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on the financial status report.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have anybody that has any questions?
No, any questions?
Looks pretty good. All right. Hearing none, thank you, Bob. And I guess we are down to, the three of us, and commissioners' reports. Gee, who wants to go first?
I can start, Mr. Chair.
Ken, Kip, go ahead.
All right. After our last meeting, I had our planning zoning meeting, which we already seen that this morning. And then I had a couple legislative meetings. I'm on the finance committee meeting for the statewide emergency communication board, and I am the chair of the legislative committee, and I'm on the finance committee. Just started the finance committee. And then Mark and I had MICA. We just did a phone-in. They are meeting in person, a hybrid, but we just phoned in. They are, they were obviously in the middle of everything with all of the things going on at the capel and getting things wrapped up. Got the reports from all the staff. Attended a mayors and clerks meeting, which I believe all us commissioners were there, and Bob was there. Only had a couple mayors there, but they had a pretty good turnout. Got to hear from someone on some more tree stuff. So just like we were at the park board, we got to hear about the same stuff, but it's always informative. And then I had my MVAC meeting, and everything's going along really well there. We don't have anything alarming going on. We are getting pretty excited, though, because come November, October, November, our building will be paid off. So pretty exciting for MVAC. Then the work session we all attended was very informative, had lots of things that we had to discuss. And then last Friday, I spent the whole day up at Mankato East doing presentations to the East senior students with Mike Lavens, the council member. Ms. Robinson invites him and I. I've been going up there for probably 12 or 15 years, and Mike's been going there longer. She's retiring this year, so we made our one last pitch in front of her classes. And Stephanie was so kind to get me some stuff, and the little yellow markers went over crazy. I put them out, and people just took them like candy. So they were excited to see us. And then yesterday, I had a JD83 landowner meeting, and we talked about some very challenging tile in that system and cost of trying to repair that, and hoping somebody will get a petition going for us. So that brings me up to today, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Kip. Kevin?
Since our May 3rd last board meeting, as Commissioner Brundur said, I also participated in the SWCD meeting, the mayors and clerks, and the work session individually on the 13th. I was at the Caberba, the Blue Earth River Policy Board meeting. Yesterday, the Rural Minnesota Energy Board met in Slaton. I attended that and then listened in on the EMC legislative update on Zoom after that. Upcoming soon, we've got another La Sura, One Watershed, One Plan meeting, and the Region 9 Board meeting is coming up as well. As far as issues, calls, emails, or visits concerning, it's kind of been the dam, ditches, and then the composting facilities. So if you're keeping scores, I've got 18 calls on MFS, eight on the dam, and only four on ditches. So ditches is coming in last this time around.
That's unusual.
That's unusual.
Especially it's spring planting.
Yes, that completes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. I was just going to get it confused with all those dams in there, but that's okay. I got it figured out. All right, I just had a few, let's see, May 4th, Department Heads. May 5th, I did have a partners for housing meeting. And May 11th with Kip, we did have a line with MICA. And, yeah, things were iffy then. And of course, now what happened with the legislature, I guess it's no more iffy, it's nothing right now. I guess it's no more iffy, it's nothing right now. That's how they're concluding. Then we did have mayors and clerks, and as Kip said, too, that was, it was good to go over again with having that, and I hope that group continues, and that, yeah, this discussion with the elm and all that was always good, and more and more trees affected. Then we had, of course, did the work session on the seventeenth of May, and that was good. And I had later than that, I was the eighteenth, had a Minnesota Valley Council of Governments, I actually had Kokomo, it was in Cleveland, I had been there for a few years.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little, it's pro, or after COVID, so it was just, it was a different setup even. We had Scott Anderson, you might remember, he's an attorney, dealing with planning and zoning and stuff, so, yeah, he was good with the program. And then I just had, again, this morning, our airport commission out at the airport, and that's a new experience for me, but, yeah, so we're looking at events coming up, see how that works out. Yep, that does conclude my report, so that is, I think, everything there is to do with our meeting.
All right.
Call for.
I would move to recess.
Okay.
Second.
For recess, count the seconds. If you're in favor, say aye.
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 Post carries. We have recess till one thirty. All right.
Good job, Mr. Chair.